Call this meeting to order. I'll stand for the pledge.
Pleasant allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, currently we want to close this public meeting for the budget hearing.
The public hearing for the budget.
All right, the public hearing for the budget. How's that? Okay.
Okay. This is the notice to the taxpayers. Notice is hereby given to taxpayers of Fountain City Civil Town, Wayne County, Indiana, that the proper officers of the Fountain City Civil Town will conduct a public hearing. Oh, I guess I probably don't need to read that because that's just the dates and stuff. So, these are the dollar amounts. We got the general estimated budget is two hundred and fifteen thousand. The maximum estimated funds to be raised, including appeals and levies exempt from maximum levy limitations, is one hundred eighty-three thousand and six dollars. The excess levy appeals is zero. The current tax levy is one hundred seventy-five thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars, with the levy percentage difference is four point zero one percent. The local Roden Street estimated budget for the year is ten thousand five hundred dollars. The motor vehicle highway budget estimate for the year is fifteen thousand one hundred and sixty dollars. The cumulative capital impact, which is the cigarette tax, is one thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollars. Special fire protection territory general estimated budget is one hundred thousand. Maximum estimated funds to be raised, including appeals and levy exemption, exempt from maximum levy limitations, is one hundred seventeen thousand five hundred and thirty-two. Excess levy appeals is zero dollars. Current tax levy is ninety-nine thousand two hundred and twenty-four. Levy percentage difference is eighteen point four five percent. Special fire protection territory equipment replacement budget estimate is twenty-six thousand. Maximum estimated funds to be raised, including appeals and levies exempt from maximum levy limitations, twenty-six thousand four hundred and forty-two. Excess levy appeals is zero dollars. Current tax levy is twenty-six thousand four hundred and forty-two. The levy percentage difference is zero percent. So, that gives a grand total of budget estimate for 2026 of three hundred sixty-eight thousand five hundred and twelve. Maximum estimated funds to be raised, three hundred twenty-six thousand nine hundred and eighty, and the current tax levy of three hundred and one thousand six hundred and twenty-four.
Can I have a copy of that, please?
Yes.
After the meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
So I can leave all this?
Together?
Together.
Yes.
Okay.
And, well, do you have any, anybody have any questions?
Um.
We don't have much public.
I was, I was just kind of looking at it, you know, for the last three years on, you know, what's went up, what hasn't went up. I know some of it, you know, there's, there's nothing we can really do about it. You know, it's cost, equipment. That's just the way it is. Everything is costing more. But I am seeing some salary increases. And then others, there is no salary increases. So, I was just kind of wondering why, why that is.
The employees, general and town employees wages, I put in for more than what was in there this year. So, that way, we can hire another person and shouldn't have to worry about their wages. The...
Well, I see like, like yours.
The other one.
And I know you're paid out of, what, three different funds? You're paid out of general, water, and sewer?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then... Okay, so you're...
Which the wage things and the salary stuff, that... We haven't done the salary ordinance yet. That's just the budget estimate that I have initially asked.
Okay, and then the deputy clerk, is, is her salary just come out of general or is her split three ways too?
Hers is split three ways too.
Okay.
Because she does work for all three departments.
Okay. Now, the council salary out of general, I don't see anything different there.
No. There's only been one time that that's been changed since I've been here at the last ten years.
Okay, and do you know why that is?
Because most of the time council don't get a raise unless somebody asks to have one put in.
Well, personally, I think we need to do something. We're basically not just the one in the group anymore. We're usually here at least twice a month for one reason or another. Mr. Steve down here is using his own time and energy to help out. I know I have done some things on my own time that I see that needs to be done. And you had told me now the council gets what, three out of general?
Mm-hmm.
One out of water and one out of sewer. Okay. Three, general, one water, one sewer. A little bit...
Okay, do you have actual, anybody have any questions over the totals? Because what you're asking me, we, I can answer you like after the meeting. But this is what the public hearing is for, is this.
Those were my main questions for now.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions about the totals?
No.
Okay, then you can ask for a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Can we have a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
I make a motion, we adjourn the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Moving on to...
Andy's not here.
New business. We don't have Shane Troyer available.
Um, Terrell's going to speak in his place.
Oh, no, you can... I have a letter from him.
You don't look like Shane.
I don't. I know my ears aren't big enough. But I heard you from here. Sorry, they're, they're in a pursuit on the interstate, talking to my ear. So, Shane had originally called to be asked, and asked to be put on the agenda. Due to a family obligation, it's his daughter's birthday, so they went out to eat. He couldn't make it. But he did send me a letter and asked me to read it. Since Fountain City Police began our K-9 program, Shane has always been a supporter. He would ask about the dogs, ask if we need anything for them. He's always trying to obtain new items to support the program, play a vital role in expanding the program. Since it started, Shane has always asked if we would want bulletproof vests for our dogs. Due to the purpose and the way our dogs are used, it is not an essential item for them. And we would always tell him to use the money elsewhere. Shane made it his personal mission to get vests for the dogs that serve his community. Shane reached out and began researching different groups that make and donate vests for dogs. The Shore family was also activate, active in getting donations for the program to keep it running. The grant we were using for the K-9 program stopped this year and we did not receive it. During Shane's research, he was in contact with Sierra's Legacy Foundation. Who told him they would purchase the, the vests for our dogs. Sorry, it's a little bit emotional, sorry. Once Sierra's Legacy learned that we did not receive our, their grant, this year they immediately called and offered to pay any expenses we may have from vet bills to dog food. Sierra's Legacy also got us in touch with an organization called Protecting K-9 Heroes, who have generously agreed to donate bulletproof vests for our canines. Our dogs will each have a vest with a memorial patch on them that will be... They'll be donated to Sierra's. Along with the vests, Protecting K-9 Heroes has also sent us first aid kits for each of our dogs. When speaking to the president of the company, she stated her goal was fifty bulletproof vests in fifty days for canines around the United States. During our communication, Sierra's Legacy extended an invitation for myself and my canine partner Rebel to attend Protecting K-9 Heroes Bash for the Blue at K-9 Memorial on October tenth. We will be seated at the family table with Sierra's Legacy Foundation in K-9 from Wayne County. We have been, we have recently been approached about donations for the K-9 program. And after some discussion, we've decided to ask that all donations be sent to Ki, to Sierra's Legacy Foundation. So, I guess I'm asking for on October tenth, will I be allowed to take the truck and my dog to this? It's in northern Indiana. It's about two hours away. I'd like to attend it and sit at the family table with them.
Sure. Yeah, I think that would be a positive thing. Something we want to vote on then? Can it get a motion?
I'll make a motion. We'll have to take the dogs up first.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, in ninety days, the vest will be completed and be here. And I believe the Sierra Legacy Foundation will be here presenting to us during the council meeting. So, everybody will be...
Awesome. That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to talk about fall cleanup date.
I tend to read that. You've done a good job.
Of course.
Sorry. I had to go. Lumps my nose. Fall cleanup date, when I called to make that, there wasn't any Saturdays in October left open. So, we got the last Saturday in September, which is the twenty-seventh, I think. So, that's when fall cleanup will be, is September twenty-seventh.
Okay, all right. If somebody will ask me, I will forget.
Yeah.
Very good. All right, let's talk about trick or treat then.
Since the meeting in October is later, I figured it'd be better to go ahead and pick the date now. So, that way, when they start calling me, I'll have an answer for them. Halloween is actually on Friday this year. So, if you would want to go with doing it on Halloween, then it's actually a good day to, to have it on Halloween. But that's up to you.
I would prefer to have it on Halloween. I'm the traditional person.
Is there a football, home football game though?
I have no idea. I don't have anybody in school anymore, so I don't keep up on that.
Do what now?
Assess if there was a home football game Friday.
I have no clue.
Nobody's ever asked me that question when we pick out trick or treat night, so.
Sorry.
Um, let's...
Well, we can always say...
Let's, um...
We're going to have that Friday night, and if there's a football game, we have it the weekend previous.
NWS.
Trying to get my phone to come on.
David's looking it up.
October seventeenth, I think, is their last scheduled game.
Yeah, I was going to say, we've never ran into a problem with football games before.
But depending on how sectional it's ruled.
So, we can ask for a motion for what?
Okay, all right. Can we get a motion about the Halloween date?
I make a motion, we have Halloween set for October thirty-first.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And times?
Oh, that would be, um, five to eight.
Yeah.
All right. Now, we need to discuss the personnel policy.
I made a copy of the page that I changed, so that way you guys could just change out that page and the personnel policy that you have. And all I did on the page, this page, was I realized there wasn't an actual place that said the work week was Monday through Friday. So, I just added Monday through Friday here. And then down here at pay periods, I changed it back to the way it used to be because ending it in the middle of the day on Thursday has caused problems in the past and they just keep getting worse, to where I'm paying for work that's not actually done and then it's got to be made up and I got to keep track. And it's just more trouble than it's worth. So, the pay periods will be twelve a.m. Friday through Thursday at eleven fifty-nine p.m. And then that you, they get paid every two weeks, which is the same, and payday will be on Friday. So, those are the only two changes that I made in the personnel policy, which is the way it was before the big ordeal with direct deposit. And I've talked to David and Trish and they have no problems with me changing it back to the way it was before. Yeah.
Okay.
So...
Has payday always been on Friday, Thursday?
Before, well, before you. It got changed right before we hired. And that was because of Kyle and Chase throwing a fit about direct deposit and having to go to Richmond to cash their check and it just... I got, I tried to make them happy so they would stop complaining about it, I guess.
Okay.
And it's caused more problems than it's helped, so it just would be better to change it back. Having it end at four o'clock in the afternoon is, because if somebody has to stay over, then they got to come clock out and clock back in and it's just a, it's just a hassle.
And it's happened more times than not, so.
Yeah.
All right, is that something we need to vote on?
Yes, sir.
All right. Can we get a motion on this?
I make a motion, we approve the...
Changes.
Changes for pay periods.
Can I get a second?
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Unfinished business. Exhaust fan.
Um, yeah, so I got pretty much the quote for Carpenter Electric that I had last month will be in item rigs, so.
And that's why it was tabled last month, it's because that new quote he got. Uh, Steve wanted him to make sure that, because of how much lower it was than the other two, they wanted to make sure that it was going to be up to par. So, he had it checked out and it will be, so that would be the, the quote that they would, you would need to have somebody make a motion on it.
Okay. Do, do we have any questions about that?
No.
No? Can we get a motion then about, um, who we, it's who we want to take care of this issue?
I forget who to get it from.
Yeah, who was, who was the individual we favored?
Was the Carpenter Electric was, I mean, night and day different.
I have to go through the stacks down there, but I'm sure all three quotes.
Rob Jefferson was like almost, was...
Fourteen thousand or something?
He was in the teens.
Who did we, Carpenter Electric?
Yeah.
Carpenter Electric. That's what it's called, company's called Carpenter Electric, okay. Okay.
I make a motion, we approve Carpenter Electric to do the exhaust fans in the flooring room.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Very good. Um, okay, weeds and rink vegetation ordinance. This was an ordinance that was already out there and we just never...
The one that I emailed, y'all, I forget when I emailed it to you, is different from the one that is on the books now. They changed the definition of litter.
Yeah.
And the definition they changed it to includes organic material. So, that means if your car is parked on the street and leaves fall on it and you brush those leaves off of your car onto the street, you are littering because that is organic material.
But it's leaves.
And when I talked to the attorney, when I talked to the attorney to get that email to me so I could forward it on to you, you five, he said that you can change it if you want to and you can cite, cite somebody for it, issue a citation. But if they push back, you're going to waste more time and money enforcing it than you are to just leave it alone, leave it alone. So, you guys can change it if you want to, but the attorney said it's going to be hard to enforce if somebody pushes back.
I forget originally why we, why this went through the system to begin with.
Didn't this all start from having neighbors?
No, this was in existence before that.
Okay.
Yeah. Had nothing to do with that whatsoever.
So, that is up to you four, if you want to accept the amendment and change litter to include organic material or if you want to leave what's on the books as it is.
Yeah, I think it grass clippings.
Yes, that would include grass clippings. That would include when you rake your leaves to the curb, if they get blowed out into the street, it's litter.
But how do you keep them from getting blown out in the street? And if the leaves fall from the tree into the ground, it's okay. But if the leaves fall on the car and then you sweep them off, it's not okay.
Right.
I think that's kind of a...
That's why most places don't include organic material as litter.
I still think it's a good idea based on everything else it covers. Uh, I think things of that nature is just common sense. We know, uh, how many to excuse it. So, but anyway, is there any discussion about this?
I have any questions?
No.
We, don't we have it in place that you're, you're not supposed to blow the grass clippings out into the street?
Yep.
Yeah, that already exists.
But that's what, when you, we have leaf pickup. Where do, where do they rake the leaves?
Out in the street.
To the, to the, to their curb. So, when the wind blows that out into the street, it's not considered litter because that's organic material.
Or if they blow from my yard into the street? I think you can kind of maybe wordsmith this a little bit and...
I'm just letting you know what the attorney told me, the way that it's worded now, that's what that means.
Yeah, I mean...
But the, what's on the books now doesn't include organic material. This would just be if they approved the amended ordinance.
Defining what organic material, that you want, what that should mean? I mean, is it grass clippings? Is it leaves? Is it limbs? Is it, you know, what are you going to, how are you going to define organic material?
It does define it, isn't it?
Does it define?
It's leaves, grass clippings, branches. It, it, it doesn't necessarily, it's, it's not necessarily meant just for what happens in, in the street. It happens between people's properties and things of that nature too, so.
Like when Tony's leaves blow over my yard.
Yeah.
And that's what, when I talked to the attorney, he said you can, if somebody puts something in your yard, a stick or a limb or whatever, you can cite them for it. But if they push back, then the town's going to waste more time and money enforcing this ordinance than to just leave it alone.
All those dead trees that, down Tony's property that have fallen over and destroyed my fence and it falls in my insurance.
Yeah, that's, that's a whole shit.
I, I, I just, you know, I'm thinking, it just seems, and, you know, it's the leaves on the car that bothers me. It's like, is it any different than the snow on your car? I mean, is it? And so, I think, yeah, if, if it's enforced, that's just, I wouldn't...
So, there is a civil law that if somebody is being negligent, i.e. the trees, the tree branches, they're not dead, they're not trimming them, it can then fall on the property owner.
Well, it's happened about three times, you know.
So, if they're not trimming their trees, you can go after them civilly.
They were dead, yeah. Um, okay, anyway.
I have two case loads if you'd like them.
All right. Any more discussion on this? No? All right. Do we, do we want to make a motion on this?
I make a motion, we leave it the way it's through.
Well, then, you're, that's just, you stayed and that's what you feel, you don't, if we leave it, then there don't have to be a motion or about, because you're not changing anything.
So, we are not going to go with this one?
Not unless somebody motions to approve it at second or passes.
Yeah, I, I say we just leave it as it is.
Okay, all right. Move it on. Department reports, anybody want to read? Is this something we don't necessarily have to cover?
No, not unless there's something that David needs to actually say or, because if there's something that needs voted on, it should have been on the agenda.
Anything you need to discuss?
Yeah, something that just came up. David passed his sewer exams. I just found that out today. And I have been in touch with the, with Scott who's over this water testing. And it's a week long deal at Greenwood. Not sure now if he can even get into the class. They have sixty-five people gonna be there for this class. They've got thirty-some people waiting. And I'd like to see David get put on that waiting list. Uh he will be gone a whole week. So we need a hotel room for Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday nights.
Is it an ending?
It's in Greenwood.
Yeah, I'm saying.
So, yeah.
Outside.
Where my kids live.
Yeah, that's where I had to go to training when I worked at uh Main Source Bank. I know we're still a Main Source Bank in Lynn, that's where my week-long training was in Greenwood.
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
So would it be cheaper if you put him in a room or cheaper for him to drive back and forth with the work truck?
Put him in a room.
Yeah, with the way gas is.
And the reason I say that is because you don't know the traffic.
Right, yeah.
Trying to drive back and forth every day.
Yeah, and gas isn't getting no cheaper either.
That's about a two-hour drive the way it looks right now.
Took me.
It's ninety minutes.
It's, the classes.
It's horrible.
The class is Monday through Thursday and then Friday you can take your exams. Well, I, I talked with them too, I can schedule, they have a, it's like a eight to eleven and then a twelve to three or twelve-four, something like that. But I can actually schedule both my DSS and my WT three and this class goes like over all of it, so like I could potentially pass both tests in the same day.
So I would just leave one.
That would, that would give me all three of mine.
Oh, I thought there were three waters.
No, just two.
Oh, okay.
Alright, can we get a motion on this?
I make a motion that we get David on the waiting list or end of this class in November.
Can we get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Alright, first.
Now somebody can find him a cheap room.
I have something I want to talk about.
I tell you what, Chris, I send Chris and Jacqueline.
In regard to the departments?
Masters.
Well, not departments, but.
Bring him a blanket and sleep on the trip.
Okay, let's cover the departments real quick first.
Well, the park is a department.
Yeah.
You got something else?
No.
I'm in the park or something.
Uh, I do have a question, um the seven oh one Cherry Street, what is that about?
Uh, I, I just read that, so I gotta, I got all that, that's all figured out. Um, if somebody called right as I was, I was literally about to clock out and Trish called me, but I got all that figured out. Guy was, I think they got a buyer for that modular on Cherry and he was saying um something with, I, I don't know, they said that the flex pipe off the gas meter wasn't code, but I mean, they, they hook them up like that.
You say gas, gas meter?
Yeah.
That wouldn't have nothing to do with that.
That's what I kinda told the guy, but I told him, I said, I don't, I don't believe we have a specific ordinance that, I know they hook them up both ways all around this area, so I was like.
That's a state ordinance.
Yeah.
Should be black pipe.
Mm-hmm.
Okay then, anything else?
All that's figured out.
Okay.
Anything else then?
Sue staying with the park.
I just wanted to um bring up again, I've found this before, a discussion about getting all of the brush and things of, of, along the creek cleaned out.
We gotta go through.
RD and R, R.
DNR.
DNR.
DNR, yeah.
Department of Natural Resources.
You have to go through them?
Yes.
Well, what?
Are you talking about along the bank?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just in the park.
Yeah, that is considered a.
The creek banks, the creek and the creek banks is DNR dis.
I mean, they wouldn't do it though, would they?
No, but they, you still got, anything you do, you gotta have their permission.
Yeah.
How do you get in touch with them? They have like a million departments.
I, David, I, that's beyond my realm, I have no idea.
I can get, I'll get with you after the meeting.
Yeah, okay.
I got something connects.
Yeah, I can see what it takes to get that done and, okay. At least on our side, I have the cemetery side, that, that would be up to them.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else departments? Anything you need to say?
Yep.
Very good, alright. We'll move on to the visitors forum. Is there something?
I'm with County Lions Club and I'm asking for town permission to close Walnut Green Vine and Front Streets, the nineteenth through twenty-first for festival.
Thursday, Friday?
Friday, Saturday.
Yeah, Friday evening.
Friday, Friday and.
Just say no.
Friday evening to Sunday evening.
Yeah, I don't think that's a problem, but do we need to vote on it?
Yeah.
Do we actually?
We have to vote on it, so.
I make a motion that we close Main, Green, Vine.
In front.
In front.
Walnut.
Front.
Walnut. Walnut Green Vine in front.
Oh, okay.
And South Street for parade.
For um, they like called the days, the nineteenth through the twenty-first.
I say, I say that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good.
Um, with, with me passing my test, uh, when do I get my raise?
What raise?
It's a hard chicken. It goes into effect when he passes, correct?
Yeah, that's, I didn't even, since they, you guys just um announced it, that would be um ask for a vote to discuss a change in the salary ordinance, cause that's the only way you can discuss it with it already being on that agenda.
Oh, okay, alright. Can we get a motion to uh discuss the salary ordinance?
Discuss the salary.
I make a motion to amend the salary ordinance.
No, to discuss it.
Oh, to discuss it.
To discuss it.
Mine, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright then.
Okay, so usually we do two dollars.
Yeah.
And so then I need to know from y'all when I do it, do you want me to make it effective the beginning of this pay period, which was Friday? And then, so his raise will be on this next paycheck that he gets. And then when we vote on the salary ordinance, it'll have on their effective date uh August twenty-eighth on it.
Twenty.
Twenty-ninth, with whatever day Friday was.
Twenty-ninth.
Is that how you guys wanna do it?
Yeah.
Okay, well then I will get a, an amended salary ordinance prepared and you'll vote on it next month.
Very good.
Okay. Stand it up.
Alright, very good.
I have a question. Could we approve the minutes?
I was getting ready to do that.
Okay.
I think we, after the public hearing, we forgot that part.
Yeah. Yeah, I've been sitting here looking at that, it's like, we're only gonna insert that, but yes.
Did you wanna say anything, Terry?
Yeah, I'm just reporting.
Okay.
Okay, alright. Better go back and do that, yeah.
Yeah. Is everybody?
And we didn't know.
We didn't have, did everybody read uh last month's minutes?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Can we get a motion for approval?
I make a motion, we approve last month's minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, very good, okay.
Now, I'm gonna go back to the visitors forum. I have something on the visitor's forum.
Oh.
Okay, um, we don't have legal here, but months ago uh we requested them, them to either check into or create an ordinance for no semis, trucks with large trailers parking on the street.
Is it really visitors forum, that would be unfinished business?
Well, cause I saw something about it.
And uh that is, somebody would need to contact the attorney and find out why she hasn't prepared an amended ordinance because he was supposed to tell her to.
Okay, and then you might as well throw in there the parking for the fire department, because that was never resolved either.
For right here.
Yeah, for like back here and that was never resolved either.
Oh, my God.
Are you talking about the no parking?
Parking across the street.
That's why the curb's painted yellow.
Okay.
That ordinance was passed.
Yeah, that, yeah.
Are they yellow now?
Yeah.
The curb.
Mm-hmm.
There's no parking sign back there on the fence.
You might not be able to see much of the curb, but.
Yeah, it's all painted.
Okay. And one more question, and this is for David probably. Uh, the gas company's been going around and doing, digging up these old lines.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, they did Tevin's last week. And Kevin told him, you know, he showed him where he parked. They said, oh, we're not gonna do anything to damage your street or your yard. Wrong.
Oh, yeah.
He has a big pile of dirt, rocks, right there where he parks.
So what, when I, when I had stopped and talked to him, they said they'll leave more than enough gravel in it in case the little holes they do dig up settle, um, but they said when the pavement.
Cause the hole, the hole is in the yard.
Yeah.
But the gravel is in the street.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause I ran over it yesterday.
I seen this fiasco. But when the pavement, when they send their pavement crew to come back out and do it, they're supposed to be taking a lot of that gravel out and then paving everything, so it's supposed to look like nobody's ever been there.
Yeah, well, of course it had these chunks of sod in the street and the three little flags in it.
Mm-hmm.
But the hole they dug was in the yard, but it's got this pile of dirt. And then right where he parks at the edge of the street is gravel.
Mm-hmm.
And the sod and the dirt all in a pile. Uh, I ran over it yesterday, so it's minus two flags, just wanna get one flag down.
How do you determine who they're digging up? I mean, what's those?
Just some of the old lines, I guess they had flagged in their system that need removed.
I just don't want him to be getting out of his truck and end up on the ground.
Yeah.
Cause if he pulls up any further, then he's gonna be blocking the mailbox. And then he's gonna hear from USPS, then they can't deliver his mail because he can't get to his mailbox. Like I said, I parked there, I was just running over it, but.
That's what I would do.
Um, I don't, I don't know what their schedule is as far as coming back and cleaning up the house.
I have no idea. I've not heard.
So should I call them?
You can.
Are they still working up here?
Um. I'm not sure, I haven't noticed any today.
That's the only place I've seen, but I don't drive around town looking, you know.
But I'm sure.
Mm-hmm.
In front of, um, yeah, they dug up there.
They're not done yet, they got a lot of places marked, so they're just.
I had like almost thirty dig tickets myself, so after I got halfway through it, cause every one of them said mark entire property. So I seen one of them out and I asked him, and he was like, we're only doing these two spots in each yard, so I was just like, that would save me seven hours already, so.
Okay then.
I will give them a call.
Awesome. Alright then, moving on. Can we get an approval of claims and payments?
I make a motion, we approve claims and payments.
I just have, sorry, I just had one question, this opiate settlement. Is that, that email that I kept getting, is anybody else getting it?
It's a new. It's a new one, I think, I don't know.
Yeah, we've been getting it for a little while, yeah.
I have gotten it.
Cause it wants me to DocuSign it and I don't know why it's being sent to me.
I asked the other clerk treasurers if it was fake or not and they said to forward it to your attorney and see what they say and that's another thing that I've never heard back about, back from, so.
I just didn't know this.
No, that's one that we, that's when Aubrey was still here, is what that money's from.
Okay.
Which is a different settlement.
Okay. Well, we'll just wait, see if we hear anything.
Okay. We have a motion, can we get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
You, who, I have Hayes down as motioned, I guess.
Did you?
Actually, it was Steve.
Okay.
Motioned, I interrupted.
I was like, you can't motion and second.
I interrupted.
Okay, Clark and Hayes, alright, got it.
Are we all in favor?
Yes.
Okay.
Aye.
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 Very good.
I make a motion to adjourn.
There we go, get a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, very good.